So that we get going, can you all hear me? Okay, I'm a trained performer, so hopefully that helps. Okay, so good evening and welcome to this select committee of empowerment and time and change. What we are going to do is ask, we are hoping to fix these microphones. First of all, can I advise that no apologies for absence have been received. Do members have any apologies to report? Yes? Thank you, anyone else? No? Okay, thank you. Could we take a minute so that we all introduce ourselves around the table so that members of public know who we are and what our roles are? So I will start with myself. My name is councillor Len Simic and I'm an Anfield board member, Labour Party member, and I'm the chair of this select committee.
Councillor Robertson-Collins, I'm a cabinet member for Environment Sustainability, so in this context now I'm here with executive officers to be scrutinised.
Lee Martin, Assistant Director, Supporting Communities.
Councillor Dori Hay, Councillor for the Speaker's Board.
Rachel Golden, Councillor for the Labour Board.
Jonathan, Councillor for the U3 Board.
Councillor Mayor Grasmane, Speaker's Board, Labour Member, also Member of this committee.
Solid reception, U3 Board councillor, also a member of this committee.
Okay, thank you. So that's who is part of the committee. So can I ask if members have an interest to declare relating to the items of business on this evening's agenda? No? Okay, thank you, that's been noted. So we are going to have a look at the minutes of the last meeting, 6th of November 2019. If you could have a look please. These are part of your agenda. I trust you have read them. Is there any comments from the members on these minutes? No? Thank you. So can I move that the minutes be approved? Is that agreed please? Thank you. So we are moving now onto item number three, and that's Cabinet Member Update, which has been tabled and we have a copy of that. Can I now please invite councillor Robertson-Collins to introduce her Cabinet Member Update? And you should all have copies of that report in front of you.
Many thanks Chair, thank you everyone. So I have submitted a written report here, so I hope everyone's got copies. I apologise that it was slightly later than I would normally submit it for distribution to committee members. Obviously it's been a difficult and long few days, although it's gone very quickly in other ways. Obviously everyone was very busy last week, so I didn't get the report into the committee on time. So people have had it today. I'm conscious that the members of the public haven't had all papers before. Have you got copies of my report there?
None, no.
I don't know, there's only spare copies of the members of the public with you. But anyway, thank you. It will all be published online as the clerk saying before. Obviously we do try to keep paper use to a minimum, to save resources. Everything else is available online, but this is the day I bring this report to the committee tonight, so online after this afternoon. So yes, it's been quite a long and difficult few days, say not very encouraging in terms of environmentalism or progressive politics generally. And I know several people in this room will be reading in a similar way to the way that I am. So obviously we've had the UN conference going on in Madrid, probably would have got a lot of publicity. Normally, we weren't having a general election in the UK at the same time, and the bad news in the UK general election, obviously managed to drown out the bad news from Madrid. So I doubt that that's been destroyed, Madrid, that is a very missed opportunity today. And a lot of decisions have maybe not been taken in a way that I expect people in this room wish they had been. And similarly, general election results, okay, I campaigned very long, very hard myself against leaving the European Union. I don't see anything positive in any way about Brexit, and I certainly don't see in terms of its impact on environmentalism and regulation to protect the environment, that anything positive has come out of this. But you never know, that lovely Mr Johnson may surprise us all, and that lovely Mr Goove and all their colleagues, so we wait the beta breath to see what comes forward nationally. Meanwhile, obviously we declared climate emergency locally, and we had to carry on doing our best locally to deal with the things that we face here, part of global climate as well as the local one. So at the last meeting, I submitted a fairly lengthy report, that's in the minutes, four pages of that, and this is a fairly brief update on some of those issues. It's not exhaustive of everything I've done as Cabinet Member, and it's not an exhaustive of the council's work on sustainability. We don't compete to publish any uselessness, say I haven't done it. Just because it's not in here doesn't mean I haven't done it, but I've tried to draw attention to some of the things that were sort of certain updates on, and things that I thought would be interesting to members. Okay. So the work on the four work streams continues. They were set out in a motion that went to the committee in July. We've now got member chairs of those committees closed, and then as well as officer groups set up to support that work. So that's very positive, and that work continues, and there's an item on this agenda after my report, but people can update on those specifically. So I'll just draw attention to the things that I personally prioritise, as my three main priorities when I was first appointed. So number one of those was the air quality and transport work. We had a lengthy report on that at the last meeting, because we just at that time submitted the draft, the draft data on business case to DEFRA at that point. And we continue to work with DEFRA, waiting for kind of their responses and so on to know how to progress that. But we continue to work with both the city and particularly with Sefton Council as well. Been to meetings with Sefton officers, our members, Cabinet Members there, because obviously what we don't want to end up with is a situation where Sefton have a clean air zone, and then we've got a little space, and then we have not a clean air zone, and end up with different people coming and different things. So we need to make sure that city region level, that is pulled together. There is very active city region air quality task forces, well embedded in all local authorities. Councillor Robinson leaves on that, I'm sure he mentions on that work today, and expresses my thanks to him for the sterling way that he's led on that work, so really pushing the city region forward on that. So at last committee, I decided to need to approve all forms of public transport and support active travel. We've had some progress with the off gates on Round the Street and Hanover Street. I understand there's a report due at Regeneration Committee later this week, I'll update on that. That will mean that we can keep us roots on the Redshaw Street, Hanover Street route as we were hoping to do, so hopefully that's going to work out again, I'm sure councillor Robinson has plenty of information on that. At Cabinet, a week or so ago, I've lost track of time, I apologise, we did have a lengthy report on the Festival Garden site, but I'll copy that if anyone needs to look at it. It's my copy, it's on green paper, but it's not exempt, it's copied them on paper. But that's quite interesting in terms of the transport arrangements and so on around the Festival Garden site about that. I've also done a particular amount of work on our walking to school project. That's something that I've led on as Cabinet Member, and it's something that I'd already been pushing on as an ordinary councillor when we took something to Regeneration Committee last year. But as Cabinet Member, I pulled together a cross-party portfolio to work on that, not cross-party, yeah, but just cross-portfolio with four different Cabinet Members. And of course I've mentioned there's four Cabinet Members, although that seems quite a small issue as in getting people to walk to school, it is a particularly wicked issue in that it's something that's getting worse, and I'm just here, but nationally, the less people walk in school, more and more people complaining about parking issues and so on at school. Meanwhile, there's more and more air pollution and less, you know, children having a healthy option of walking. So as I say, it involves across four portfolios with three of my Cabinet colleagues. We've got quite a lot of resource going in from some externally funded projects, and we're trying to work with those projects to pull that information together, to try and get some really good examples of what works in terms of, and what schools want, and what schools can support us with. Because obviously, we are short of resources as a local authority, and the election of Torrey government obviously isn't sending out really positive signals on helping with that. So we will be sending out questions to all the schools in local next term, that's kind of ready to go fairly soon, but obviously we don't extend it to lack of persons out, asking us, say, schools what they want to see in particular, and how we can help them. That will include things like potentially go for net closing roads for twenty, thirty minutes in the morning and afternoon. Nothing's off the table at present, but it will require schools to input and to provide their governors or staff or parents to help, resource on that stuff. There's not a council resource that can just support that in a blanket way. But it will include things like training, people can enforce on powers potentially if schools are willing to participate in that. So that should hopefully move on that, on that project fairly soon, and have some pilots in process by, after the half-term of February, so that we have something there. And I've also been talking with Sefton Council about that, and hopefully we can push them through at city region level. As I say, it's not a local problem, that is a much more general and integral national problem. Second priority that I particularly stated when I first got appointed was around the natural environment. So we've got the wildflower projects going on across the city, in particular now we're looking at training up our own staff for our house, take those, looking after the wildflower patches that we have created, but also of course in increasing those. I personally would love to see at least one wildflower patch in every ward as a minimum. Some of those have already been played for with section 106, but in no way do people have to wait for section 106. In Greenbank, councillor Brown and I actually used our own emphasis on wildflower project, so you know, every councillor has the option of doing that. But we do need to get the capacity to deliver and increase a little bit of a bottleneck in terms of the results for the advice and the support in doing it at the moment. So that's why we need to get all our own staff trained to support the project, people who are running that. Trees obviously are massively important. Lots of people involved in the big climate fight back a couple of weeks ago, with various projects going on around the city. There's also Friends of the Earth, lots are going around about doubling tree cover, which do disappoint principle, but I'm not 100% sure how many trees exactly we've got in terms of covering them. But of course, again, that doesn't mean that anyone has to wait for a council structure to be on tree planting. If you have your own land, of course, some people may do, they can get on with planting trees, but we are doing our best and I bring a report in the new year specifically on the citywide tree planting programme. I've written about the Pocket Parks Plus Programme, some good leads there. Apologise for all the acronyms in the report, sorry about that, I was trying to save page. The Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government has given us funding for Pocket Parks, there's five listed there that are already in process, there's another three we hope to be coming through. People know I'm extremely keen to use any kind of vacant lands and green spaces to make the absolute most of those, whether they're as meanwhile uses for growing or actually, you know, bringing them back into permanent use. It's very important that everyone has access to green space in our city. My third priority that I spoke about is on waste production. So I didn't, I'd spoken at the last meeting about the importance of not just enabling recycling, I think that's a bit passe to be honest. We've got to really learn much more fundamentally about preventing waste and reusing and composting as much as possible. I also said that the Gold Stars awarded, I think councillor, the Gold Stars last week, you could look at the alabans, well done. Councillor Prince has got the yellow Gold Stars this week. I don't know if he's done anything yet, but I know that he's been looking into selling compost bins, which again is a really kind of low-cost intervention that you can do in your own ones at ward level using Mayor and Mayor's funds, and everybody can do that, you don't have to wait for me to do it. Draw attention here to the citywide alleyway improvement project. Particular thanks to the streetside staff and the recycling team for all the work on that. And also just, can I mention also that I want to thank the parks teams as well for obviously the under the action environment, particularly Christina Weems, if that could be made, they're extremely under-resourced but work such a hard and constructive way to bring in external funding and so on. I've mentioned here the staff green champions, so the citywide, council-wide, sorry, network of staff champions, which means regularly with Cleve in charge of them, I mean, as in coordinating them. So that's about the action council, this internal processes, using people's good ideas and things throughout council, all the different departments embedding sustainability. I think we've got someone here today, brilliant. And we, we've also had surprises that will be given out. I don't think they've been told who's won yet, though, because that's still a secret. I'd have to shoot you if I'd told you who won the prizes for the three ideas. So basically, yeah, we've declared climate emergency, and there's things that we can all do, there's lots of things that we're up against, it's a tough world that we work in, and thanks to everyone who's been helping, and that's my report.
Thank you Laura. Now there's an opportunity for some questions, so if you would like to ask questions, please, councillor Coleman.
That's a good idea, as I'm saying, the draft report, yes, if we get the draft report sent now, but also once we get that report out, we'd be really happy if members can chase it up and make sure we get all that information back from schools, because I know it's really difficult to send it through to schools that are there, so rush up their feedback, so that's a really helpful idea, thank you. The draft was being amended, so once I get that out, I'll get that out for people with their ideas, and then as I say, I'll let you know once it actually goes out, and we can make sure we get some responses, because we do want councillors as well as governments to be really involved, because again, staff are just a sort of a bundle with the amount of work in schools now. Thank you for that.
We have councillor Conception and then councillor Collins, please.
Yeah, thanks Chair, yeah, thanks for the report Laura. Can I just ask a question in relation to the more to schools, yeah, reports? I know one of the problems in the past has been recruitment to school public control, and I know they've been trying to sort of encourage people to, because you can present those things about the uptake and all of those positions.
Thank you for that. I don't have an update on the actual non-current vacancies, but I did send something out about four or six weeks ago, the list of vacancies, and at that time, again, encouraging councillors to have a bit of direct involvement. Again, that's a real problem recruiting lollipop people. The funding is there for it, but obviously, again, people do those odd hours, very short hours, but being available twice a day is really, really difficult. We've tried to push to get more flexibility, and again, some of that is about getting schools involved and working with Councillor Barry Murray through the Teachers Association. What we ideally like to see is get the training, as I say, several people in each school, so that someone's always there who can come out and do the lollypopping. That's a great word. But it is, it is really difficult to get external people to do those jobs, but it's not, it's not funded. So I'll get an update on that, thank you, but I did send out this a while ago. It's a worrying long list, and as soon as we've approved a crop, then of course a couple more by definitions often elsewhere, if we're tired or something, so we do need to make sure that we're asking people to walk to school, we are providing those school proceedings, absolutely. Thank you for reminding.
Councillor Chris Brown.
Thank you Chair, thank you for the report Laura. I wonder whether it might be useful for this committee, it's important to have a report back from our cycling champion, particularly in relation to things like schools, I think that might be useful for us to have that as part of this committee. I appreciate this question, you might not know the specifics, but I'd also maybe investigate the Alan Priory site. My understanding is that the council is paying for remediation of the land due to environmental impact from the developer. Is that not something that can not be, is that something that we can build developers for, and simply just going out to councils, person similarly, and have a development that might take place?
I obviously don't know about that project, and I don't know about that, but I agree with you that I am very strongly, it's the opinion of the Pullings, it's paid, but landlords pay for all the damage they do, and so developers in the same way. So I don't know, I don't know if anyone here is here to announce that, I'm going to ask the, for regeneration on that specifically, like, sort of the principle of what you're saying, I don't understand, or why, would the possibility of doing that, assuming there's some reason we can't do it, or because we haven't got a lot, but I will try and make inquiries, but maybe we can ask that, not too short, but something, I don't know.
Maybe a minute for response or something, maybe not just from yourself, but from someone else.
Okay, we have councillor Lawrence Brown, but just let me say, because I have a member of public raising their hand, we did have questions from public in the last meeting, but we first have to see how this goes. Usually, it's not just that members of public ask questions as well. So let me first have the members here, and then we'll have a look. Yeah, divide at a time, okay? Is that, is that good, yeah? Okay, so we have a question here from councillor Lawrence Brown.
Thank you Chair, and thanks to the cabinet member for the report. Couple of issues, one is on the east gate at Mount Lea Street and over the street. It's been a press release issued by the council this afternoon, which refers specifically to the potential of the A2 bushrooms, doesn't mention specifically the other bushrooms that are under threat in that area, as far as being diverted down different routes. So I don't know if you're aware of the latest situation, but maybe, maybe a good update when he does his report later, but that's just to pick up what we've said there. And then technically on the trees issue, I did plant a few trees in the big climate fight back, and what I found was very interesting actually in that event was community involvement, there was quite a range of people involved, a lot of children involved in the climate fight back, which would be quite the success. So it would be good to maximise that effort, and let people else know that in the future.
Also, hopefully in updates on the buses, to say as far as any of the 75 net you've resolved in that sense, that they haven't been moved off the route, and with longer term issues we'd be able to do, as in the pre-date current problem.
I'd pretty agree with you more about a job with few trees, sometimes at Cullen Street and a lot of very challenging parts and trees.
Okay, do we have any more questions from the members of this committee? Okay, thank you. So it would be good to allow the public, since they're from here as well, to ask some questions to Laura about the report. So we have a question here.
Okay, my name's Richard Hunter, I've got a question about the Garden Festival site, we mentioned that on the first page, that there's development, we mentioned about the development on the Garden Festival site. And my question is, was that unfair to the 2,100 houses that are going to go from the site?
Yeah.
And the government, the government that's going to be, is that, what's the question? The first question is, is that unfair to the 2,100 houses that's being built on Garden Festival site?
I'm not sure if that's in the first page, but that's like, that's.
So is that what you, so that's what's being talked about here?
Yeah.
Right, and can I ask what was said, what was discussed in that, what is the outcome of the actual discussions about that development? It's just one sentence.
Okay, well, what I said is that the report, which is here Wednesday afternoon on the sixth, that's in the public domain, you're absolutely welcome to look at it.
Did you hardly do something, assume any of what?
Of this report?
What's an overall, the overall ground then, the transport there?
Of the transport?
Well, that's what you're saying, that's what says here. So it says, the garden, Festival Garden recycling ground, a report was agreed that the council's cabinet on the 6th of December, which includes aspects of sustainability and improving transport connectivity in the area. So my next question is, you know, what does that entail?
The report talks about things that transport in the wider sense in terms of improving the station and access to the station and cycling and bus trips and bus stops, you're welcome to look at it, it's on green paper, it's not actually certified, it's on that thing.
So it's that not a line, it's just.
Everything's a line, everything's a line. I literally have a common difference.
Okay, can I also just add, so we have that report that was delivered on the 6th of December, and the cabinet on the 6th of December, that was a cabinet report, and that's already online, but as this committee as well, we are going to have a presentation about Festival Garden sites in the new year, so that might be an interesting time for members of public who are particularly interested in that, okay? Let, I'll just have to take a couple of more questions from public first, since I lost round the members. Okay, so two more questions from the public, please. We also have a very important meeting happening that us members need to go to, which is regarding the budget, so Chris, please.
So just two quick things, it's a bit of a question. We mentioned the wildflowers, and we said about the staff. The staff are very reluctant to do training on wildflowers, the ground staff, so we've been talking in lectures about Richard Scotty, who does all the wildflowers here in the pub, about training the friend, park friends groups as well, and so that will be done in our community garden. The tree is friends who are in partnership with the City Council, the park friends groups, and for us last year, we planted with three schools, four schools, 1,045 trees in two days. For, it's a really good initiative, and so the wildflowers, we saw with all, Laura and I, we went across all the sites, they're all served with the children here, and we've started planting every day, wanting to know where the wildflowers are, literally from the first day you're single.
Can I just say, yeah, can I thank the friends of all the park, I mean, some friends groups are much more active than others, and I think you did great work. And when we were planting in Greenbank, we had 130 of people come out, so it's what I'm talking about, the staff, the staff will be trained. But you're absolutely right, it's great if we can open that up further and cascade that down, but what I'm trying to say, some of it, like ploughing the ground and stuff, obviously we can't operate on machinery, so something has, and knowing what time of year it has to be cut again, so that seed falls at the right time, and all those kinds of like technical things that we need to have embedded in our own staff's knowledge, but the more we can involve the community in joining in with that, absolutely, that was, thank you, Caprice, for that.
Any other question from public? Yes, thank you.
Can I just say, we know that walking to school, I walk my man to school every morning, they suddenly vote school, and the pollution is actually terrible, there's loads and loads of cars. Now what happens is every two months, two very, very nice traffic waters, that there when the people arrive in their cars, they drive off Donald's Way, which is the entrance to the school, and of course, because of traffic water, there nobody stops, they won't care particularly about that. And just to suggest, could we not have those two, are lots of very nice chaps, you actually are there, don't let them, let them be in a car, let the people come in the park, and then come and find, you know.
We're not nice officers, we want honesty.
Thank you for walking to school, I appreciate that. I mean, a few years ago, most people did walk to school, that used to be a normal thing, and certainly we did. And certainly people didn't, used to expect to drive literally to the school gate, which is just outrageous in the same way people now park on that, maybe not on Smithdown, or something. Just people's attitude is a disgrace. And I don't know why public behaviour deteriorated to that effect, but it has done for sure. I totally agree about the enforcement, but there is a schedule of enforcement, so if they're not at your school, they probably are somewhere. Obviously, that's a limited resource. But I don't, there's also a limit that has to be certain amount of time someone's parked for the legal hours, actually, to. But I certainly agree that we need more enforcement. But I'm trying to get people to not drive near school, talk about the more fundamental issue, isn't it? Because of, say, air quality, but also other things, aspects of children's health and wellbeing, that it's a good thing to do. Children should be going to schools near them and should be able to walk there, or at least to park somewhere off and then do the last bit of walking, so that you're not getting that congestion and that air quality issue. It's not just air quality, there are more general health issues, but air quality comes into it. So thank you for being careful, but yes, I'd love more enforcement. I'd love everyone to be jailed who parks on the J L line.
Thank you, Laura. Could we please move a thank you to Laura for this update, and is that agreed? Okay, thank you. So we are moving on, as you know, when we declared climate emergency, which was declared cross-party, it was a cross-party motion, and we set up four task groups. And these task groups are built and natural environments, transport and air quality, waste, resources and energy, and low carbon economy. Each one of these task groups is chaired by a different political party chairperson. So that is important, that there is an understanding that we all collectively, as all four parties that are here, have to work towards a better environment and mitigating climate change, climate emergency in Liverpool and of course beyond. So what we are going to, and also it's important to know that there is also specific council officers who are working also alongside these four task groups. So that there is also officers committed to the same task. I'm saying these things also for the members of public, so that you're aware of how this is all functioning. I'm sorry for the members, this might be old news, but just that we know how the structure is. So now I would like to ask each chair of each one of these task groups for a bit of an update, as to where they have been. So with the first one, built a natural environment, we have Councilor Alison Clark, who's been chair for this. So Alison, please.
Okay, so as Chair, a member of relevant council offices, including Chris Walsh, Divisional Manager for Government's Orders and Insurance, and Sam Campbell, Head of Ploughs here, who's tonight, and Sam, you may want to chip in. So at this meeting, it was agreed that Sam would pull together various policies and procedures already in existence within the city council pertaining to the built and natural environment. This will enable the task group to know where we currently are and to determine our aim to the objectives going forward. Sam's also engaged in a scoping exercise, looking at what other local authorities are doing in relation to the climate emergency. So for example, Bristol have been very proactive at the forefront in the recent past, looking at the climate emergency and seeing what authorities like Bristol are doing in relation to our task is likely to be very helpful. The plan is to meet in the new year when this information is available and the members of this task group, as things stand, Councilor Tricia O'Brien, Councilor Maria Tuller and Councilor Jemaine Kushner.
Thank you, Alison. Can I also ask, because at our last meeting, which we held here, we had a number of motions that were passed to these task groups, so that we make sure that these motions that have been passed to different task groups are addressed. I think for me, as the Chair of this committee, that's quite important.
So Sam, I don't know whether you want to comment on that, because I never saw motions where passed where before a particular task group.
Yeah, we're working through those now, we're going to be bringing them back to the scrutiny panel that we're working with Council Clark in the new year, so we'll be working on bringing them back to the committee.
Thank you, thank you for that, because I think that's one of the things that we know, that, you know, they just don't disappear somewhere. Okay, so let's move on now and talk about a different task group, which is transport and air quality. May I please ask Council Lawrence Brown to give a report on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've had a meeting with Assistant Director Colleen Martin today regarding the task group and how it should be set up and what the discussion should be about. Currently, there's an officer task group, sort of separately from the members, which is running, which is talking about a lot of the different issues which would be raised over the umbrella of the members' task group. So things like working with DEFRA on the pollution levels currently in Liverpool, and also on schools, which was mentioned before, the public health side, and electric charging points and so forth as well. And Colleen might want to jump in on some of this later, actually, after I finish. Also working with Mercy Travel and Mercy Rail on looking at what the transport systems can do to assist with the gear quality business, problems that we've got. And also working with highways on reconfiguration of junctions and so forth, and roads in the city to try and improve quality. So these are all possibilities, these are all ongoing works that officers are engaged in, some things that we can look at as members. There's proposed to be an extra five major pollution stations implemented, I think this was mentioned at the Arts Committee meeting in the city. So the locations of those haven't been decided yet, but hopefully the task group can have an impact on that and where they go. Looking at baseline data for pollution levels and how that might inform future aspects of the committee's work, basically, or the task groups' work, as we say. We also want to accrue the violence element briefly, and these are all very brief, by the way, we can have much, much time on the meeting, but again, we'll be exploring that in further depth in the future. And obviously, we've got a motion coming up that you can look at in a few moments' time. The Clean Air Plan, just various issues under that that we were discussing. Also, we can link in with Stadio Pride and some of the work that he's still doing with the cycling. I believe that was mentioned by one of the members here today as well, looking at cycling and walking. And particularly, he needs to look at sustainable methods of transport and travel in the city. So in the new year, we'll be meeting for the first time. I don't know the members of the committee, sorry, of the task group yet, but I know one invitation's gone out. I think another one is forthcoming shortly. Obviously, it's been a busy, busy time, I was just reading some of that. And I think one key aspect is still the additional impact that the committee, sorry, the task group and its members can sort of achieve on cleaner and, you know, the air quality in the city. It's how we can move that forward. Asking me as well to forward any documents which are interesting, strategies and so forth, which are currently being put together by the council, so that we can, you know, count on those.
Thank you very much, Council Brown, and Colleen Martin, would you like to add something?
No, that's a very effective summary, but as Council Brown said, we're expecting the task group to meet prior to the next meeting of this committee in Derry, so it's only the meeting of the members of the January, so obviously it will present some additions, some initial information to refer.
Thank you, and the same, obviously, do those motions that we put towards that task group, it's important that we address those. We are going to move on to waste, resources and energy, waste, resources and energy, and we have Councilor Chris Brown to report on that.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank Chris Thomas, Assistant Director for Environment, along with Peter Bay, Democratic Services, for getting together myself, I've put together a bit of a Terms of Reference and Work Programme. I appreciate giving the time and the fact I was standing for election. I only had a short period to meet, but we managed to get through a bit. So key tasks of the scrutiny panel, we'll look at how we reduce carbon emissions, so we go to waste, resources and energy. And the panel will hold meetings, particularly theme meetings, particularly around each area. So around, you know, one month we'll do waste, and one month we'll do particularly around resources, and one more around energy. And we'll look to receive evidence from various partners. You know, I'm very keen on getting key stakeholders involved in this, people like the local NAPIL, for example, most of our authority, during a general election campaign, they're the Chair of the North West National Farmers Union, who's doing a lot of stuff around food waste with Manchester Council. You know, we'll gather examples of best practice locally, nationally as well, including procurement, waste prevention, reuse, recycling, energy saving and green generation. And we'll review policy locally and nationally, and external funding opportunities that we can tap into as a local authority. We're going to focus on progress today in terms of what council's already doing in terms of reducing carbon emissions. I think it's important as well that we have an understanding in terms of what the local authorities are already doing. And I think, you know, it'd be useful for all members to kind of, you know, if this task group can increase the communication of what people are already doing, then I think that's a good start in local really. In terms of the membership, currently, it's myself and Councilor Dave Cummings. I've got two vacancies currently for the committee. I'd be really keen, and I had actually emailed Mayor Anderson about this, I'm really very keen on actually having at least one councillor from the north of the city on his committee, because I think, I think, I don't want it to just be, frankly, you know, I represent Water, you know, we've got some of the highest recycling rates from that part of the city, but actually, you know, all five parts of the city. So, yeah, absolutely, no, absolutely, but I think it's important if we're declaring.
Yeah, if it's your vote, it might.
Yeah, but I think, you know, if we're looking for a citywide strategy, I think I don't want it to just be from one part of the city. And I think we want to try and get, you know, or the aspect across the city really. So if any members are interested in joining us, please do. In terms of the terms of reference, we've used the Friends of the Earth, produced a kind of fifty point planary for local authorities that declared a climate emergency. And so Chris has taken out a number of points from that document and will be using that to formulate our kind of plan for the year. And we're also focusing around the UN Sustainable Global Goals, there's three or four in there that actually will shape what we're doing as a, as a committee. We'll meet in the new year and we'll hopefully have a report for the first time when we meet as a committee in February. In regards to the motion, by the way, we had a lot of motions to do this, from this committee to that work programme. I don't want to just do those motions in the first meeting. I appreciate that members might be waiting a while for a response to those motions, but I actually want an opportunity for us to go through those motions in great detail. I think if we just take them all into one meeting and we're just going to look at them, note them and not really do anything with them, I'd like to put them under each theme meeting and actually progress them throughout the year, rather than, rather than kind of taking them in one. So if you, if you've put a motion to the committee and you're wondering what's happening to it, we will look at them throughout the year and we will look at them in greater detail and properly invite the person that made the motion to come on and make a case as well, so we can actually do something more with them.